Seven o'clock in our Planning Commission meeting would start at seven, except for we do not have a quorum at this time, so we're going to give it a few minutes to see if we can get one more Planning Commission member to show up.
My leg? Seven on one day.
You need your little spoon here?
No. I did.
Okay, we do have a quorum now, so we're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. This Planning Commission meeting for the City of Royal Oak. Before we get started, let's introduce ourselves, starting to my left.
Dan Goddick.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Mike Fournier.
And Vara.
Tim Twain, Director of Community Development.
Eric Klooster.
Dave Gillum, City Attorney.
Thank you. Okay, that's item A. Item B, we need approval for the minutes from June 11, 2019. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Move by Mr. Goddick. Support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Klooster. Any discussion on these minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Okay, the next item, item C, this is public comment on non-agenda items. So if you're here and you'd like to speak to the Planning Commission on an item that's not on the agenda, please come forward. Okay, that's seen. We'll close the public comment on non-agenda items. We're going to move to new business. The first item is a public hearing. This is for a special land use and site plan, SP 190715, to permit microblading as part of a personal service salon at Selfish at 28978 Woodward Avenue. Mr. Twain.
This is an existing building, an existing site, as well as an existing site plan. The business is occupying one of the tenant spaces of the building. It's approximately a little over 1,200 square feet that they're going to take up, about 1,275. The reason this is in front of you, the site's own general business, in general business, certain businesses are allowed in a special land use. And in this case, the makeup and hair salon is a permitted use. However, one of the services that they want to provide and offer is classified under the adult entertainment or adult business section because it's classified as body art and tattooing. So it's in front of you for that particular service as a special land use. There are no modifications planned to either the exterior of the building or the site plan. So the only item is the special land use provision in regards to that particular service or activity. The one item I would point out is it doesn't comply specifically with a setback requirement of being over, being at least 1,000 feet away from a school, church, park, or other institutional use. This site and building are adjacent to the Little Flower Catholic Elementary School, which is immediately north of the property line along Woodward Avenue. So if you did grant the special land use permit for the particular activity service that they want to propose, they would still need to seek and obtain a variance from the zoning board of appeals. That's pretty much the background on the special land use report that I have. As I said, it's an existing site plan, so the only site plan item we have would be approval of that variance from the zoning board of appeals. Everything else would be standard contingencies.
Do you need two separate motions?
Generally, you do. One for the special land use, and then if you do grant that and grant permission to go to the zoning board for that distance variance, then you can deal with. Any site plan issues, as I said, were, it's an existing site, so, and there's no items proposed on the exterior as part of the project.
So we approved this spa probably four years ago, maybe? Three or four?
Yeah, there was a spa in there. This is not the same operation.
Right, it's a different operation.
A different name.
So that's the operation still there.
So technically, the use would have been administratively approved had it not included the microblading service.
Okay, okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Twain? Mr. Casada?
Sorry for being late. And my question is, this is, microblading is what's being asked for, but if we grant the variance, would that allow them to also do tattooing or other sorts of body art piercings? There is this, can it, or is it restricted to microblading?
Yes. Unless you prove it with a specific operational plan limiting them to something, but if you wanted to make the motion and limit it to microblading, then that's fine. But if you, since we're treating it under that tattoo, body art operation, if you just blessed it, we would allow it to do any of those services.
Thank you.
Question. Thank you. Mr. Goddick?
Is the setback the only thing that's, that they would have to go in front of zoning for?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Twain? Okay, not seeing is, are the petitioners here? Yes, please come up. Would you like to add anything? Well, first of all, introduce yourselves, your name, please, and then if you'd like to add anything to Mr. Twain's presentation, please do so.
Hi, I'm Selfish, and we would only be offering microblading. We wouldn't be adding any other tattooing or anything. It's just eyebrows.
Okay.
Yes.
And this is my husband.
She said it well.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Microblade kids nearby.
Oh, yeah, no.
Is there an age limit to enter the spa?
Well, for the service of microblading, yes, you would have to be 18 or over or have a parent guardian.
Any questions for the petitioner? Okay, not seeing. If you could just have a seat, this is a public hearing, so we're going to go ahead and open up for the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this? Okay, not seeing. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. Mr. Casada?
The other spa you were talking about, I believe, is Megan Murphy, and I wasn't here for that, but you guys did face the same issue, which is in a different building in that strip. It's farther south. It was next to the lawyer's office. I think, I think I would like to support a motion. I'll probably make the motion myself, limited to microblading, because I think that's what people expect, and I think that's the way it should be. So when I get a chance, I'll make that motion.
Sounds like you made the motion.
Well, not yet. I got to hear what people say.
I was ready to support that.
Oh, all right. Okay. Like to move to grant the special land usage limited to microblading.
Support.
Support. Any discussion? Mayor?
I would say, yeah, this is, you know, we have a technicality on the books here. We didn't anticipate microblading 20 years ago. And so, you know, you're here, it sounds like it's a reasonable accommodation and a service that our constituents, visitors will enjoy. And I think Planning Commissioner Casada makes a good point that, yep, we've got to protect it just to microblading because, you know, going back and giving a special land use for anything that could open up on that property, whether you're the tenant or not down the road, for tattooing is probably, I don't want to say out of the question, but we'd like to see it again, you know, if that were to pop up. So I think, you know, the city is adequately protected, and you guys can conduct your business, and everyone's happy, so I think it's a good solution.
I do have one question. If you could, could you come up here? Just, the, having to be 18, is that a state law? You have to be 18 or older to get microblading?
Usually because it's still considered tattooing, so.
So, okay, so it is state law?
Yes, it should be.
Oh, okay, great. I'm just curious. And I would fit that age group, so. Any other questions or comments? We have a motion on the table here. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? You're approved.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you for coming out tonight.
Still got to do the site plan?
Oh, sorry, we got a site plan.
One more site plan.
Hold on one second. Thanks, Mr. Twain. Is there a motion for the site plan?
So moved with the contingency to, is this where they got to go in front of zoning? You should mention that?
For the setback.
For the setback. I'll make that motion.
Is there support?
Or?
Casada? Any discussion on this motion? Not seeing, all those in favor say aye. Aye. You are approved.
Said that last time.
Again.
One more approval, zoning board for the setback, and then, you know, you'll get there.
Okay.
I think so.
Now, that is the only public hearing, so the next item on the agenda is the site plan to construct a four-story, 18-unit, multiple-family building at 127 to 207 West Parent. Mr. Twain?
Just, I have a chair?
Oh, yes.
I got to ruckus myself on this one.
Oh, okay, thank you. Oh, yes, we need four.
The site's on the south side of West Parent Avenue. It is owned mixed-use two. In the mixed-use two district, multifamily developments are a permitted use. The site's just west of Jim Brady's, adjacent to it, and there are three parcels that are included as part of this project. They are, as you indicated, proposing a four-story building that is 40 feet to the roof line with parking underneath and 18 multifamily units on the upper three floors. They are required to have 36 parking spaces, and they're providing 39. Access to the site will be on the south side off of the public alley that runs along the south side of the property. There'd be two driveways there into the, underneath the building. There is no access to the alley to the west or directly to Parent, as proposed on this site plan. The south, the setbacks on the building itself is proposed at 20 feet off of the property line along Parent or the north portion of the site. The south setback is at zero, where the parking is because it's enclosed. The building does step back when you look at the elevation and floor plans on the second level, approximately about 25 feet. And then from the east property line along Jim Brady's, the building sets back 10 feet. And to the west along the alley, it's 16 feet back. You'll see that a little better in some of the elevations. Terms of the other items that are Planning Commission discretion, they are removing several trees. The site plan itself identifies six trees as being removed. However, the survey has indicated nine. We haven't been out there to field verify the number, but the ordinance requires it to replace every one that's being removed, so they would need to either, the plan itself is submitted shows a 12 being installed, but potentially they'd have to have some more if there are actually nine. Couple of the other items to touch on, the, all three of the properties would have to be combined into a single parcel. If you're comfortable with the setbacks, that's a discretionary item as far as your approvals under the site plan, as well as the site corner clearance triangles for the driveways that empty out into the alleyway. What else should I hit? I think those are the largest, are the major items under the site plan. Pull up the elevations and you get them soon as it rolls through here in a minute. Kind of running slow today. Anyways, you can see the elevations of the site and the proposed building. As I indicated, along the south property line, the parking goes all the way to the alley. However, the building sets back some 25 feet from that property line, plus or minus. And it does, they're proposing a patio type area on that, above that, that space. With that, I think I'll stop and see if there's questions.
Questions for Mr. Twain. Mr. Twain, the trees, can they fit them all on this property that they're, that they have to replace? Or if not, would they put them into a tree bank, or?
Their site plan, well, if I can get back to the survey, I'll show you.
I'm sorry, I should have taken better notice of that, but I.
The site plan itself indicates they're removing nine, or six.
Okay.
The survey that was submitted shows there's nine.
How many are they adding back to the actual property?
12 under the site plan.
So the difference is 12 versus 18, depending on if you go with the six or if you go with the nine.
I mean, I certainly wouldn't want them to plant trees because they have to. It has to make sense from a landscape point of view, and the trees need room to grow. I'd rather have them do what they can for the site and then.
Donate a couple of trees to the parks.
Put a tree bank or whatever we're doing right now. Anyway, I just, I'd be interested.
What I'm referring to is on this site plan, it shows, these indicated are the trees that are being removed, these six. But the topographical survey that's at the beginning.
Yeah, it is.
If you count all those trees that are shown, there's nine.
Okay. Well, I guess we can work through that with the petitioner. Any other questions for Mr. Twain? Okay, is the petitioner here?
Good evening. My name is John Marositch. I'm the architect for the project, and this is Jason Priestcorn, who's the developer of the project next to me. So, in regards to the question of the lack of trees, we're perfectly willing to accommodate the additional trees. I believe what we could do is put a couple of trees in the front. As you see, there's two trees. We can accommodate the additional trees on the site, and we'll be able to establish that plan.
My point was, is if you couldn't fit them all, you could put them into the Royal Oak Tree Bank or the.
Well, we'll look into that. Either way, I mean, that's not an issue.
Okay.
You know, I mean, we want to accommodate a landscape plan that's going to be attractive, so if additional trees are required, we're certainly going to accommodate that, whether it's a land bank or otherwise.
On your property, or if not, the options, you can, like you said, give it to the bank, and we'll find a good spot for them in town.
Well, good, okay, that's fine.
Would you like to add anything else Mr. Twain presented? Is there something else that you'd like?
Well, Mr. Twain did a very good job of presenting the project. Again, what we're trying to do here is create a, an urban solution that, in talking with Joe Murphy at the planning department, we were trying to create a walkable context to the front. You see the parking is all on the ground. We're trying to enclose all the parking. We're accommodating in as much parking as we possibly can onsite in accordance with the code, and then still not only screening it, but enclosing it. So that takes an element of distraction, of look off the site. The entrances are off the rear, so we feel that that's going to be less of an imposition upon the street traffic, so we like that. The brick is, again, the brick and the stone. The base are part of trying to create a, what we call it, a Yorkville, Toronto, Chicago, New York look in the city. We understand that the major developments are on the Washington and Main, and this is a quiet, walkable solution that exists in between.
Thank you. Mayor?
Yeah, can you walk me through your plan as it relates to environmental sustainability, stormwater management, green attributes, lead attributes in this building?
Well, you notice there's no downspouts exposed in the building, and the idea here on the engineering level is to keep it all internal, and you see we have a green roof in the back. Jason also has an intention to provide a green roof on the roof itself. We've talked with Joe extensively about that. Because we're covering the site as such, we would have to have a lot of groundwater retainedage within the site and possibly below the building. So we're, I don't know if that answers the question specifically.
Well, yeah, there's two really approaches to it that we've seen, and actually, if you look at our ordinance, we're very open to looking at creative solutions to manage stormwater. I mean, there's no doubt, and there's no argument with the science and whether what we've seen even this year with heavy rainfall, we're going to see more and more frequent storms, heavy downpours. We just saw it over in, you know, Warren area just recently, just boom, they got hit. We got hit in 2014. Stormwater is coming as far as we're going to have some ordinance changes, and I think there's a business case for you to really consider. You can do the detention, and you can follow it, and you can store the water and let it out. However, if you employ green infrastructure, especially on this part of town, it's really sandy, it could be less money upfront, and when you get the stormwater, you know, we're moving from, going from the water bill to actually assessing your property, how much you put into the system, and you'll pay a lot more down the road for your stormwater management if you don't have the green infrastructure in place. So what would make me feel really happy, and this is a priority of the commission, this stuff goes up to the commission, I would highly encourage you to look at for your own benefit, but also to fulfill the needs of our community, you know, to look at what you can do to keep the water out of the stormwater management system and keep it onsite, take advantage of infiltration, and bioswales permeable pavements, and maybe even just shrink what you have with detention and try to make it up with green roofs and things like that. That would excite us.
Well, let me get you excited, okay? Because we did talk to our civil engineer about this, and bioswales was one of the items he brought up. I mean, I know that there's other things that you mentioned here, so I don't see, Jason is also the builder, and to the degree that I believe that will, let's just say we're going to make those improvements in that manner. I'm perfectly open to that myself.
Who's your civil engineer?
Right now, we're dealing with a couple of different ones. One of them is now Wackenfrost, which I believe would be perfectly qualified to.
Absolutely.
To deal with that issue.
Yeah, they're very aware, I mean, with our park designs and things like that, our mission to get the water out of the storm system so we don't pollute our lakes, but most importantly, our basements don't flood. And, you know, when we put these buildings in, this is an opportunity for us to challenge you to make sure that not only does it, you know, you're designing a building that's responsible, but, you know, I'm telling you, the way the storm ordinance is going to come up, the more you put into the system, the more you're going to pay. And whether you sell it, your tenants or whatever, the cost of ownership will go down if you put that water in the ground where it belongs. So, and it often doesn't cost as much as putting detention in. So I think for me, you know, I like what you got here, but to get some sort of solid, really solid, especially as it makes its way to the commission, it's something that, you know, we're very interested in, and I highly encourage you to look at.
Just for clarity, this isn't going to the city commission.
Well, this one wouldn't be?
No.
Okay, yeah, because it's not a PUD, it's a site plan. So was there a?
However you wish to work that into our hopeful approval, we'll definitely incorporate that.
Okay, perfect.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Mr. Klooster?
Can you speak to the ventilation requirements in the garage and how you're handling those?
Well, again, that's mechanical systems solution, and we understand that we, we're probably integrating a ventilation system in accordance with what's necessary for automotive car parking, and we'll be ventilating it up through the center of the four-story building.
Okay, so the intent is active mechanical ventilation?
Yes.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Okay.
Is it your plan to do a green roof, or is it something you're?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so, green roof, okay.
I noticed on the back, are you talking about the green roof on the very top of the building?
Yes.
Or you're, okay, because then you also have a green space that looks like?
A terrace, walkout terrace to the rear.
Yeah, so is that, that's over the garage? Okay. How are you going to, how would you manage stormwater on that? Would you put in like an underlay, or how does, how would that work?
Well, there's a variety of different systems. I was just in Detroit on a project, a DAFs reuse project just before coming down here today. And basically, basically, one way of handling it is to actually have a roof system, a flat roof, some rubber roof of some sort, and then you have an elevated system above it that has a two-by-two grid, and that grid carries, could be pavers, it could be grass implants and the like, so that way it can be moved around. See, as you see, we call it out as a green roof, to the degree it'd be a plaza type of roof that would allow the water to seep through to the roof down below. That's one avenue of discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
But we want it to be an active roof, green.
Sure. Mayor?
Question for Mr. Twain and Mr. Gillum. If we put forward a motion for approval, would it be a challenge to include in there sort of a best efforts condition to work to minimize the amount of stormwater detention and maximize the amount of infiltration? And with an approved plan with the city engineer, is that something that, can it be that fluid? Or does it have to be very specific, like binary, to say, you know, all or none? Because I'd prefer, you know, it doesn't sound like they have all of that figured out yet, but if they're willing to do it, you know, I think, because when we look at the site plan approval, what we have there today versus what we have now, we have a lot of infiltration there right now because of the way the property is designed. I don't want that infiltration to go away, so I kind of want to say at least where it's at today, not add to detention, but at a minimum, reduce it. Help me understand what would be appropriate.
Well, generally, at this, at the site plan level, we don't have engineered drawings. We don't have, whether they're complying with the stormwater ordinance through traditional methods or not. Generally, on the site plan, and I'll refer back to like the Kroger's development, they identified where they might put a green item, whether it's a green roof in this case, or in that case, they had bioswales where they identified them. At this point, it's simply, then we would expect those elements to be incorporated, and they would have to comply with the city's stormwater ordinance at the point they submitted to engineering for review and approval, and they would get whatever calculation at that point.
Yeah, but to comply with the stormwater ordinance, they could simply just do detention.
That's correct.
But in order for us, this would be the opportunity for us, if they're in agreement, to say, hey, can you explore, you know, infiltration to the best of your ability to at least keep it where it's at today or below?
I don't know how you would do that, and without it potentially coming back for further review, because it's not specific enough? Because if you impose the standard that the stormwater runoff of the site today is three homes, and they have to comply with that, and they can't make it an economically feasible project, they're going to be back here asking for.
Yeah, but I mean, okay, I guess that's my question. Can we say like, hey, we approve this site plan so long as there's not an increase to the amount of, you know, contribution to our stormwater system? You know, conditioned upon that, because given the property is somewhat, you know, green as it is right now, and that if they can't comply with it for whatever reason, they have the right to come back here and ask for a change and plead their case. If not, then at least they know what they have to, what measure they have to hit, which is no more than what we're contributing to the system today.
So, being single-family residential, I would highly doubt that there is any tie-in to the storm system. It's all just runoff, so.
What's I mean, runoff? I mean, there's a, they'll have to do a calculation to see how much runoff is being contributed by the property today, provide that study, and then not more than that. I mean, that's kind of where my head's at. I know it's pulling an audible here, but I just want to.
Hold that thought. How much square feet are the three homes, roughly?
Size of the homes?
Yeah. Yeah.
I would have to look on their plan. Do you know offhand?
No, we don't.
They're around five thousand, I believe, between the three of them.
All three?
Five thousand? Roughly, yes.
And how, what's the square footage of your building, your pervious building?
There are more.
It's, it's-
One, four of it.
Yeah, I can say twenty-four. I don't know offhand.
Thousand?
Excuse me, yes.
Okay.
Well, basically-
But, but again, like you say, if we're, um, doing a green roof and a green, um-
Yeah. Basically, those are the homes as they sit based on the survey and what they cover.
So you take out the driveways and the homes.
But if you are doing a green roof, then I would think that that would be adequate coverage maybe for-
Well, what I like to say, I like-
It still goes into the storm.
Eventually, yeah, because, I mean, it might absorb, absorb the first inch or two, but after that it does go back.
You get minimal evaporation, but for the most part, it still goes into the storm.
Yeah.
That's all you're going to get anyway with GI is the first inch. I mean, beyond that, it's just major storm.
Well, infiltration, you get a hundred percent if you can do it.
That's true. Unless you have a hundred-year, three-hundred-year, five-hundred-year storm and then that's when we get the flooding. We're only worried about the first inch anyway because that's, that's-
Yeah, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to hamper your development here. I just want to make sure, I'm trying to look out for our residents because, you know, I was here, uh, you know, with watching people's lives literally go from their basement out to the curb and, um, you know, we don't want to add to stormwater. So I'm just trying to figure out a way, like, it sounds like you guys have a plan, I'm just trying to figure out a way to memorialize it.
Well, we have an intent, okay? We don't have a plan and, and I'll be very frank about that. We, I mean, you're, we're jumping into a certain criteria and you, you seem to be providing some sort of outline of performance.
Yeah, but I don't want to handcuff you. I just want to have some sort of direction with this to, you know, not make it, not incre- not grow the amount of stormwater that the properties are already producing today and however they achieve that.
But technically, building it in the conventional standard isn't going to throw more out there than already is going. So that, that broad-based comment is, is because part of the storm detention ordinance is to hold it on the site and gradually release it.
Yeah, but we don't want it going into the, into the lakes or anything like that. There's our environmental element to it.
You want it to all soak into the site?
As much as possible, but, you know, I don't know if that's possible. That's the issue, you know what I mean?
Let me, let me just add, um, uh, Jason here is a roofing contractor and actually, we've talked a lot about how we would go about facilitating this. Um, the performance criteria you're outlining, um, we were more doing it from the aesthetic nature, the performance nature of the recreational component of, of it, but the, the stormwater component, we haven't really got delved into. So we are intentful upon doing it and the fact that he is a ripper and, uh, does extensive ripping, not on a green roof level yet, but that we're going to use this as a prototype of sorts for him as well as, um, or our, our developers.
I might be, I mean, for me, just talking about this a little bit, I apologize, I'm hogging this part of it, but it's kind of a priority for us moving forward, the more I think about it.
Thank you.
We should probably should have been on this with, you know, sooner, but I think for me, I mean, um, you know, we are putting together a list, the commission has directed staff to put together a little checklist for folks when you come so you know ahead of time. So it is a little unfair for me to pawn this on you right now, but since we're talking, um, and you seem amenable and you care and you want to, you know, invest in this community for all that we stand for, um, you know, my thought is, is if, you know, if what Mr. Twing says, if you're doing the same footprint, it's not going to get worse. You know, we have runoff right now from the roofs and it all goes through the driveway. It's not even held in detention. So there will be an improvement as it relates to some of the backfilling. If you're going to do a green roof, maybe it's, it's practical to say, you know, that the runoff won't be any worse than what it is today and you'll employ the green roof and you'll take care of the trees. And I think that if that's something that we could do as part of a site plan, I think I'd be good with that.
That's a basic, that's a good basic outline. I can see that. We, we don't, we prove to you that we're, um, not doing anything that's going to be any greater of a contribution to your stormwater than what already exists.
Right. And then you're going to add the green roof element, which is helpful too. And then, you know, the tree situation, you seem amenable to as well, so.
Trees are a positive feature, okay, for the, for the development.
Have you designed a green roof before or worked with a company that puts in the green roof?
No, not specifically, okay?
Okay.
But, um, that's what we're planning on doing. Again, like I said before, Jason is intending upon developing other properties and because this is his primary profession, we discussed on how we were going to go about doing it and using it as an amenity feature for the sales of the project as well. See, you know, the fact is that we have enclosed parking, um, secure number of other amenity features within the building. This is just one more, I think that would be attractive to certain people who'd be looking for this type of market.
People that are moving to Royal Oak are moving here because we have an exciting, vibrant town that's, you know, attracting people of all, you know, creeds and creations, right? And I think one of our values, our core values is making sure we're good stewards of the planet and I think it's a smart, I don't want to say marketing tactic, but, you know, putting that green infrastructure in, uh, I mean, I think it saves you money with, you know, how we're going to look at stormwater and the ordinance change that we have to do, um, because of the twelve drain system, twelve city drain system lawsuits and stuff like that. But, um, you know, I think it appeals to the very type of people that want to call Royal Oak home and that do call Royal Oak home. So I think it's smart.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Is there a motion?
I'll try a motion and at the risk of looking foolish and having Mr. Gillum throw his pen at me, um, I, I move, we approve the, let me get up here. It's a site plan. Um, that we approve the site plan with the condition that, you know, we have a tree plan for eighteen trees onsite or into a tree bank, um, that the green roof is mandated and that, um, that the property doesn't contribute any more runoff than it already is today, whether it be detention or, you know, otherwise.
Okay, is there support?
I'm assuming all the other contingents.
Yes, with all the other contingencies. Support.
Support by Mr. Kloster. Is there a discussion on this motion? Mr. Goddick.
I'm sorry, thank you, Chair. Uh, I, I admire the mayor's comments and, and lengthy discussion, uh, but I, I, I think we're bringing, um, things upon a, a nice plan, um, that's not required here. I, I think we are handcuffing the gentleman a little bit and, uh, he, he seems amenable to a good design. It's clear that it's not going to contribute more, um, to, to mandate it, uh, might require, um, measurement before and after or something, so.
His motion included detention. It included all the, the amenities that would, that the petitioner discussed plus detention.
Right, but it was a man, if I heard it right, it was a mandate that it will not, uh-
Contribute more to the stormwater system than-
So does that require a measurement before and after to, to fulfill that mandate? Don't get me wrong, I agree with the direction that the city is going and I agree with all the things that, that we should be doing, but, um-
Well, I think that calculation's coming anyways with the stormwater utility.
Let me finish my comments and then you can rebut if you like, but, uh, I think bringing this, uh, kind of on this step with this particular petitioner is a little, a little onerous. And, uh, I, I admire this step, but I, I, I think, uh, as we have, uh, what you say, the city commission and the planning department's going to do in the future, uh, that would be this, this, this step to, to wait for requirements like this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor? I appreciate that. Um, I don't know that it's onerous because it sounds like the developer and the architect say it's completely possible. I think we're asking for a few more trees, we're asking for something they already planned to do, uh, with the green roof and what we're asking for is not to change their detention plan. And it sounds like the footprint anyways will probably lend itself to getting them almost there. And if they have to spend a few hundred bucks on a million-dollar project to get a certification that, you know, they're not, you know, providing any more stormwater runoff when it's a huge priority, uh, if, if they're telling us it's not onerous and I believe them it's not onerous and, uh, they can do it, then I feel comfortable, um, putting that request out there and also making sure that we're setting a precedent for all future projects that come before this table, that this is something we're going to be looking at, like we did trees and other things. So, um, I appreciate it. Uh, I, I think that, um, it's achievable and, um, you know, I, uh, I think it would be, if they're agreeable, which it sounds like they are, I see your head shaking, then we should do it. They're asking for some variances from us, they're asking for some, uh, things from us. We should, you know, make sure that our neighbors are getting a little bit from them, which is west stormwater, if not, not a worse situation.
Any other comments on this motion? So I'll comment, I, I, I'm going to support this. I appreciate Mr. Goddick's comments and, and I, um, I listened intently, but the time to start is now. Actually, the time to start would have been five years ago, but I'll settle for now. Um, as most of you know, I've been talking about green infrastructure and innovative stormwater techniques for the almost ten years I've been up here. So we're finally doing it and I appreciate the commission taking, uh, initiative to do this and our, our city management and planning team, so I will support this. I think, uh, we have an agreeable, uh, petitioner and it's, I'm excited to see what you guys can do. Any other discussion? Call for the vote, all's in favor say aye. Aye? Any opposed?
No.
Pass is three to one.
Good luck, gentlemen. I tried to be too hard on you, but we got to look out for everybody in the neighborhood, so you don't want to be the guy that builds a building and all of a sudden people's basements flood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Casada outside here?
Okay. Item number three under new business, this, uh, is also a site plan to construct a three-story mixed-use building with ground-level commercial units and twenty-four upper, upper-level multiple family dwelling units at forty-seven ten Rochester Road. Mr. Twing?
Well, soon as it comes up, there we go.
This site is on Rochester Road, uh, it's just south of, uh, the Royal Inn Bar. Um, the zone mixed-use two is similar to the last, uh, project. Um, and, and the uses that are being proposed, which is a multi-family residential, uh, twenty-four units as well as about seven thousand square feet of, uh, office space, medical office space.
Tim, we're going to have to look at your screen there, our, our computers are all frozen right now.
What's that?
Our computers are frozen.
Just be aware, we're looking at your screen as you flag through.
Well, let me find the site then. Uh, as displayed, that's the existing, uh, site configuration and, and topography of the site. As I said, it's zone mixed-use two. Uh, the petitioner is, uh, planning to do, as I said, twenty-four residential units on part of the site. Uh, they are maintaining, uh, the portion of the existing commercial building and adding on to that building some two thousand square feet of, 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 as I said, office, uh, as it's indicated on the site plan, medical office space. Uh, they are required to have eighty-three parking spaces, uh, they are providing eighty-six. Uh, those are separated on the plan between those that would serve the residential and those that could serve the office building. There are two access points off of Rochester Road, there's one off Genesee Drive, uh, to the south, and there's actually one to the north that leads into the public alley that's, uh, south of, uh, Royal Inn Bar and the parking lot in the south there. Um, the setbacks on the site, uh, they're to the building, uh, the north setback is approximately five feet to the building. Uh, the south, uh, is roughly ten feet, but it varies because the building sets back at different points and Genesee Drive kind of curves, so, um, it varies. The east setback from the residential, uh, to the east is some forty-nine feet plus. Given the height of the building, uh, in that setback, you do have the ability to grant that, uh, height determination here, uh, rather than it having to go to the zoning board of appeals, uh, for a height to the building, which is slightly over, uh, forty-one feet, forty-one feet, six inches to the roof line. Uh, so you do have that discretion here rather than it being a, an item that needed to go to ZBA. Um, there is screening indicated along, uh, the residential side to the east. Uh, it's proposed as existing, uh, concrete screen wall. Um, there's also a screen wall along the north property line between the businesses to the north that's existing, uh, and they're proposing to maintain it. Uh, they are also proposing to add screening where required along Genesee Drive and, uh, should be required along Rochester Road to screen the parking lot. Uh, one of the items we have in your memo is there are several items that need to be, uh, revised and corrected and, and on, that are on the plans. Uh, those are really kind of, uh, the funtry items that just clean up, uh, some items that are noted. Uh, and the rest of the contingencies listed there are standard contingencies, uh, for any building. I'll get to the, uh, evaluations here in a sec so you can see those. It is, uh, three stories on the residential portion, uh, again with parking underneath. Uh, the office building to the west is, is one story in height. Kind of a perspective of it. I guess I'll stop there if there's any questions on the overview.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Twing? Mr. Casada?
Okay. Um, B through D for seven-seven-zero-four-six-D, um, maybe I didn't print it out. Are those listed?
What's that?
You said, uh, that we, we can, we need to, uh, if the site plan meets the other criteria in sub-paragraphs B through D, seven-seven-zero-four-six-D, that we can grant, this is what it says here, we can grant the, uh, height variance, but I, I don't think you included that here, or did you? Or did I just not print it out?
Item one is, is we put a note in, the, the height to the building is limited to thirty feet. They're proposing thirty, uh, forty-one point six feet or forty-one and a half feet. Um, in order for you to have that discretion, there's a setback requirement from the residential, uh, property. They are meeting that requirement, so you do have the discretion here to grant that height.
Okay, I see. We don't have to go through them because you're telling us, we, they meet these criteria.
You do have to, right.
I got you.
If you choose to, you don't have to.
Because the setback is accommodates the height.
Yes, because the setback is compliant.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Twing? Is the petitioner here?
I don't get this like this often. Hi, John Marusich, architect for the project.
Would you like to add anything?
Uh, no, again, Mr. Twing, um, did a good job in the, um, doing an overview of the project. Um, you know, it is a mixed-use, it is an office and a residential as opposed to a retail. And I know some of the, uh, conditions of cleanup on the plans, um, we made that switch, um, a very quick period of time, so we didn't pick up all the items. So, uh, again, all of the items that identified here will be provided, uh, we've actually already made the corrections, we just need to submit them. And we'll probably be doing it tomorrow before one o'clock.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Casada?
Uh, yes, because you don't, I, I did have a little trouble figuring out where the medical office space was going to be. If you, does he have control of this? Can you walk us through, explain to us how the medical office space is going to be situated, how people are going to get in and out? All that?
Sure. Um, well, he's pointing to it right now, okay? There's an existing bank building and you see there's a rectangle to the north portion or the top portion, that's the, uh, footprint of the existing bank. And that existing bank has a basement to it. And it was desired by the, um, petitioner, the, the, yeah, the developer to, um, incorporate that building into it, uh, because it already has a lot of infrastructure elements we'd like to reuse. And, uh, the portion to the south, as he's outlining there, is the one-story above-grade addition. We provided enough parking for utilizing the basement of the bank as a part of a medical facility if necessary. So for the most part, we somewhat overparked, but there's a need, we feel, for particular types of function that that lower level would provide a many value for a medical service office.
Okay, so you would see people would use the parking to the, on the west side of the property for medical, and that would be the commercial parking there?
That's correct.
And how, we also had a contingency about screening. Do you have any comments about screening on, along the road there on the west side?
Well, we believe we have provided adequate screening per code on the parking side. You can see right there, he's identified one component of there and one to the lower portion there.
Okay, and what is that? Is that a wall?
It's a 30-inch-high brick wall, brick and stone cap to match the building.
Okay. And, all right, the exist, the other existing masonry walls are like poured concrete panels, right?
Yeah, they're existing conditions that we're reutilizing.
Okay, but these would be...
These are new construction. The ones to the front that screen the parking that are for the new medical facility would be new construction, new brick to match the existing brick. So we'll have a decorative tie-in between the two.
All right. And speaking of that, can you explain what that material is on the outside of what appears to be the stairwells? I was a little curious about that.
Sure. You want to go to one of the color elevations? I can...
As long as you're talking about the masonry.
Yeah. The, I think, which are, the top portion, the gray portion, or the...
All those that look like they have sort of tiger striping on them from these...
Yeah, well, that's horizontal metal corrugated building panels, the gray portion. There's a number of different examples. I don't know up here in Royal Oak. I know in Birmingham, and I got a project in downtown Detroit where we're utilizing that. The horizontal woodlike is a cement board product. If you go, now there it is. If you go to the Whole Foods in Birmingham, that's almost exactly the same product.
Okay.
Okay. So you give that wood look, it's kind of like a cedar look, but it's durable forever product.
What's it made out of, again?
It's a cement board product.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Okay.
It's actually Japanese, but it's a very durable product. And again, Whole Foods in Royal Oak is my example I use of it. The brown portion in between all of that is common brick.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I have another question. The balconies are very nice. They seem to cantilever out a significant distance, and I personally have a little bit of heebie-jeebies about the balconies. We've had some issues here with those. How do you plan to support those balconies that have that significant cantilever?
It's pipe with cantilever, is number one, okay? And the perspective, the other perspective, it does seem to accentuate it more than it is. How we plan on doing that? We're gonna get an adequate, correct structural engineer with a bona fide certificate of assurances of that, not, "I know your problem," or what was a previous problem. It wasn't engineered properly. This will be engineered properly. I mean, that's the only assurance like an opera.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Mayor?
Deja vu.
I can't figure that.
Maybe it's not so lucky having the same ones at the same night. No, I'm gonna ask the questions real quick. Tree plan, can you recap for everybody that may be watching on TV what the tree plan is?
Well, I guess I have to ask Tim here. Did we meet that criteria? I think we're one short in this particular case.
I believe so.
Yeah, okay, so we're one short. My staff will be thoroughly reprimanded for this, but nonetheless, the idea here will be that we will provide the adequate tree plantings per ordinance, and we meet the green space requirement, you know, for park, for the green space. So I don't know that that's...
That was one question I was gonna have, is I'm trying to, and I can't see the measurement here, and maybe I missed it, because it's, you know, we had a late meeting, not too late last night, but, you know, when I look at the amount of green space, there's still green space here, but it looks like there might be a little less or a little more. Do you have an idea?
Well, as I understand it, we have to, the site, 10% of the site has to be green space.
Right.
And we meet that criteria. There is a calculation.
What is it today?
What is it today?
Yeah.
It's a bank. It's quite open, a lot of green.
Right. Would you be amenable to some of your landscape? I guess we're approving the site plan, but, you know, maybe this is, Mr. Godek will criticize me for this being late in the game, but... We've done this here before with bioswells and things like that, looking at some bioswell options within that landscaping to manage some of that stormwater runoff again, to make sure we're not, even with detention, that when we have these heavy rainstorms, that detention, it's full, and it goes into people's basements. So I just want to make sure that, you know, we're not creating more potential because we have more hard surfaces. So if we have some additional green space or bioswells, is that possible to, I mean, it might take away some of your parking. Too much green space, that's why I think bioswells might be a good option for this property.
Well, in this particular case, we are meeting the parking requirement, and I know that some people have asked for relief on that parking. We're not. We're providing two spaces plus, which I think is a good thing.
Right.
Okay, so I, you know...
Most of the green space out is out in Rochester Road, though.
Yeah. Well, this is, this is the, isn't, the 10% is within the confines of our site.
Yeah, that's correct.
Sure, we have a lot of green space.
I just wanted to make the comment, don't...
Yeah, I'm looking at, on the other side of the sidewalk. You know, when I look at the...
Are you building new curbs?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, so I'm looking at, the picture I'm looking at here has curbs and landscaping, and so if there, if there's opportunities to put curb cuts in there, you know, cut away and have the water drain into the landscape, you know, would that be something you could look at?
Absolutely.
Downtown Midland just tore up their streets about a year and a half ago to put on the water mains and redo the streets, and they put great infrastructure in bioswells through the whole downtown, and it's fabulous. And the water goes right into these bioswells. They're fully landscaped. It's got an overflow, and it fits right in with the downtown. It's an urban environment, so it doesn't detract or take away from anything.
Because unlike the last project, you had a green roof, which was really good. It doesn't sound like that's the plan for this one. So the only other way to manage that stormwater naturally is through bioswell activity, in my opinion.
Well, let's just say, you identified, this is a little, this is not the same project, okay? And so consequently, it would take a little more creative venture of mine to see how we might be able to facilitate that. You know, I'm looking at the south of the site. I'm looking at the east portion of it. And to whatever degree that, again, we have a very creative civil engineer who, you know, who's amenable to this, same person we're dealing with with the other project. So I just imagine I'm probably gonna be extending myself to see what I can do. I mean, I'm, let's just say, I'm of that means of thought to pursue this type of suggestion. You know, it's just, in this particular case, it's gonna take a little more creativity, so...
Could I just show you this for a second? Would you just come up?
Sure.
This is a picture of what I'm talking about. It's urban settings right downtown, just so you get an idea of what we're talking about. And then here's the overflow right there and the...
Okay, so that's the cut right there.
Yep. This is just a different way to do it. They use metal here. I mean, if you've got a curb, you could always just cut the curb, too.
Cut the curb, dig it out, plant some native species, and, you know, that helps with the stormwater management that we're so hyper-concerned about.
Well, probably assist in the land, or the irrigation, site irrigation somewhat, I guess, you know, so, I mean...
I mean, it's not, it's not a slam dunk, but I think it's doable. I don't know, we have an expert here and...
Well, let me just say, you know, this particular client has a lot of properties in the city, and the city of Royal Oak in particular, Birmingham, I think some, Vrindel, whatever, and property management is a big issue for him. And so consequently, we want to be able to, you know, incorporate that ideal with his ideal, making sure that he can push the snow correctly and responsibly.
Yeah, it's always, always an issue.
Exactly, see, so, you know, it's another balance. I guess with this particular client, I'm very, very sensitive to that issue.
Okay.
So to the degree that I would have to further be sensitive to the fact that how can we incorporate these innovative, I'm not familiar with this particular technique as such as the other ones, so to the degree that I might have to, you know, investigate it further. But like I say, I'm open to that condition. That's how I like to go about doing things. So that's all I can say to that issue right now.
Could it be to say to best efforts to put in, you know, curb cuts and bioswells where possible, and, you know, approved by planning staff, so you don't have to come back here or anything? And if it's zero, if it's 100...
That's pretty good.
You know what I mean? Where you do your best efforts, and then, yeah, look, you can put in, you can manage, because, look, we're, people live in this, there's neighborhoods, there's homes around here, and I'm just paranoid based on what we've seen this year and last year, that we're gonna get, continue to get these storms, and we have to act with every project. And I know it's not, again, Mr. Godek's right, there's, we are working on it, but, you know, Chair Var is also right, like, we have to start now, too.
Well, let's just say, you know, we'll do the best-case practice that we can to facilitate this. I mean, we're, we have minimal opportunity here, but to the degree where we demonstrate to you that we are going to work toward that end, if you can outline us, let's say, a general criteria, which are performance criteria...
It isn't onerous, but that gives you a good faith effort to do it, and then, you know, planning or staff can, engineering can approve your plan. That would be fine, I think, if you're amenable to that.
Amenable.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Mr. Godek?
Just a couple of comments in the end. Thank you, Mayor, for saying that I was right.
Never let you down, Dan.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And don't take my earlier comments in the wrong way, because I think our efforts with encouraging water retention and all the green things is the direction that we should be My comments were based more on how to dole that out in a... Fair and equitable manner. And when we have good petitioners like this, they're nodding a lot when we say, hey, can you look at doing this the right way? And he's saying, yep, yep, yep. But I guess let's tread with caution on how we kind of pull this out. And that's all I was trying to say, but good efforts in the end. I appreciate what you're doing as well. You're right, Mayor.
Well, we respect your opinion as well.
Thank you.
And you're not wrong.
I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Any other, Mr. Klooster?
Can you speak to pedestrian access to the office? The one is proposed office, the other is assuming whatever tenant comes first, or is there reserved for office specifically?
You're talking about parking or...
Pedestrian access.
Pedestrian access? You mean after a person parks?
No, if someone was trying to walk to this business.
Well, let's go to the site plan. You know, obviously, they walk along the sidewalk, and the two entrances, there's two, at this point, it's proposed they have two entrances to the facility, one to the north, you can see right there, and one to the south. So I think I, you can see right there, there's a, on the...
I gotta point to it.
Yeah, right there.
We're imagining that's the spot where someone walking on the sidewalk would cross over. You know, I think, I think what you might be saying, maybe we yellow stripe that area, cross the walkway, and we have a handicap accessibility on both sides probably, but that's, that's how I see walkable accessibility from a pedestrian perspective from the neighborhood.
Yeah, I think there's a general concern over the Main Street and then Rochester Road for commercial locations, that we make sure that we maintain that kind of building-on-street character, and we don't get into a setback strip-type character for our retail locations along those thoroughfares. And I just, I just get concerned with this layout, that this is very, very vehicle-centric, and it doesn't seem to, you have multiple curb cuts with, I know there's existing curb cuts, but that doesn't mean that that's the right way to handle it. So I just, I get concerned with pedestrian access for a community that is more walkable than a lot of the adjacent communities.
You know, I take your opinion very seriously, because I understand what you're saying. We didn't look at this like a downtown location. And you'll notice my comments, in particular, for the previous project, was that we wanted very much of a walkable, approachable site. In this case, we have this, you know, this retail to the north, that is the old-school retail, and then we have the old-school suburban housing to the south and to the east, and then across the street, we have the other city. But we saw this more as a vehicular, accessible type of project, and we, just as I noted, we made some provision for that type of accessibility, but we didn't see it, we didn't see it in this case as predominantly a residential, walkable, approachable site. So I just have to be very honest about that. We didn't.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Is there a motion? Mayor?
Make another motion here that I think is hopefully, sounds like it might be amenable. Move for the approval of the site plan and all the conditions listed, with the additional condition that the petitioner use their best efforts to look at stormwater management in the context of bioswells, curb cuts, et cetera, and, you know, submit that plan for, to the city planning and engineering department for approval, and, you know, at staff level to help manage the stormwater runoff, to make sure it's, in an attempt to be neutral or less.
Mr. Casada?
I'll support.
Do we need to put that tree in here? Is there a missing tree?
I'll accept an amendment from anybody if they want to put that extra tree in there as well. I guess I'll ask, I guess we officially have to do an amendment. I'll propose an amendment for the tree, and then we can vote on the amendment.
Mr. Casada?
I'd like to ask Mr. Twing questions. Is that necessary? It says the site plan, one of the contingencies, the site plan shall meet all of the code and ordinance requirements. Wouldn't that be the tree ordinance?
Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay, yeah, you're right.
It covers that, okay.
Even though the plan is missing one, please Celeste, all of the ordinance, good point.
So there's been a motion by the mayor, supported by Mr. Casada, for approval of this site plan. Is there any discussion on this? Okay, not seen. Let's call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
So four to...
Thank you very much.
Four to one? Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's it for new business. Under other business, we have sign variant, two items. The first one is signed variance, SV 190708, for request to install wall signs for professional office building, HR Pro and Benet Pro at 1025 North Campbell Road, with a variance to allow two wall signs on the east front facade elevation. Mr. Twing?
Let me see if I can get here. As the staff report indicates, the petitioner did apply for wall signs to the building department for two wall signs on the east facade of the building. The one wall sign was slightly over 43 square feet, and the other was 55 square feet in area, for a total of some, a little bit over 98 square feet. Now, the sign ordinance in sign area two does allow one sign on each facade, and the total square footage for that sign can be 100 square feet, as indicated in this case. The petitioner is asking to be allowed to put two wall signs on the east facade.
Mayor?
So, Mr. Twing, just to make sure I understand, the real first variance here, or difference is two signs versus one, but together they equal 98 feet, but we would allow 100 square feet if it were a singular sign?
If they put them together and they were under, and they were 98 square feet, they could put it in without a variance.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Twing? Mr. Casada?
So I think you, I think you mentioned, they could put also a sign on two sides of the building. They're only asking to put them on one side of the building.
You can put a sign on every facade of the building.
Okay, so what they're, they want, the square footage would be okay if it was one sign. They're just asking that splits this up into two signs.
The square footage is fine for both signs. They're adding them both together, they're under 100 square feet, so there's not a variance for that. It's just to allow two signs.
Thank you.
Is the petitioner here? Welcome. Your name, please?
I'm Michael from Ideation Signs, Michael Garvalio.
Do you want to add anything?
The only thing I would add is, it's a multi-tenant building, there's two tenant spaces in there. This proposal is dealing with the larger tenant space. There's two businesses that operate out of that tenant space, so HR Pro... There's two businesses that operate out of that tenant space, so HR Pro and Bena Pro. Yeah, we were not looking to increase the total area of signage beyond what would normally be allowed. We're really responding to the architecture so that we don't have two signs sort of crammed together, two logos that are uncomfortably close, in addition to taking into account future updates, that second tenant. We're not taking their facade area into account for the calculations. So, they would also be allowed an additional sign based on their tenant facade frontage. And the plan is, looking forward, that all of the signs would be essentially like one per bay. So, avoiding a situation where it looks like there's two logos in one bay essentially put together, and then you would have this northernmost facade facing the same area that would have the secondary tenant in it as well. And usage-wise, the businesses' clientele, some people know HR Pro, some know Bena Pro, not everybody knows one or the other, so if there's like a question of, could we get away with one sign? That wouldn't really work for the business as far as putting one name up there either.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner? Mr. Casada?
Okay, there's three bays, right?
There's four total bays.
Four bays.
Yeah.
And right now, there's two tenants, and there's room for one more tenant or two more tenants?
Yeah, if you go to the very first elevation, that shows the whole building, that kind of breaks it down. The sec, yeah, there you go. So, I'm just going to show you this. So, there's one, two, three, four bays, and you'll see at the top here, we've got it broken into the majority, these three bays are the primary tenant, who's also the owner of this building. This secondary bay is, sorry, northernmost bay, is TBD exactly what that signage is going to be, but the plan was that it would be, you know, restricted to that bay. Obviously, that's the second tenant's space.
Mayor?
Occupable space.
Sorry, I just want to make sure I understand. So, basically, the left side there is the HR Pro, the middle two spaces are the Bena Pro, and this leaves you the final space on the end for a future tenant possibly.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and right now, the, there's been some updates to the building, and it is divided that way. They've had approved plans, and, yeah, it's, that's not going to change.
Mr. Casada?
Well, I was just going to go back to Mr. Twain. So, they, in order to get a third sign on that facade, they would have to come back for another variance at that point.
Yes, yes. Because then you'd be over even, yeah, you'd have a third sign, and you'd be over 98, or over 100 square feet anyways, if you wanted to even look at it that way.
We asked Kevin about that, yeah, sorry, Kevin Duhonik, and we showed him this plan. He said we should just look at, if you go only 13 feet high for your calculations, you get one for multi-tenant buildings, which this is, if they have separate entrances and all that, which both of these do for these suites. You are allowed up to one square foot per linear foot of building width. And if it's multi-tenant, you just have to, you have to look at that tenant's occupable frontage. So, according to Kevin, we would not need a variance for that secondary tenant, because it's a multi-tenant building.
With a separate entrance.
With two separate entrances, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Is there a motion? Mr. Godik?
I'm confused by some of the comments, I guess. It was asked and answered that if there is a third sign, that it would have to come back for another variance. Is that correct? Did I hear that properly?
I'm not sure why Kevin would say it doesn't need one. It's one building, but I, I don't have anything that says that, so. My read of the sign ordinance is that's one facade on one building, and it's got two signs on it. When you add a third, I'm not sure why you wouldn't be, but if there's a determination to be made, we'll deal with that when they submit.
I guess that's the only...
So, I, I'm not sure what that, we're talking about something again that's not in front of you, so...
I agree. I think we need to stick with this, what the proposal is here.
I mean, it's probably got, what, one driveway, or there are two driveways, this whole building?
There's two driveways. There's one at the north and one at the south end.
The part that isn't jumping out at me to make a motion to approve the variance is that if the, if this tenant outgrows the space and we're back to four bays, I guess it'll come back in front of us. I just see, right now, it looks like it's in scale. It doesn't bother me that much, but I think if it got busy with four signs across this thing, then it might look bad, but what's in front of us today doesn't bother me. I'll leave it at that.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Casada?
These are lit with LEDs.
Yeah, so these are the main signage, the Icon and the HR Pro, and then the Icon and Bena Pro are face-lit illuminated channel letters, not on a raceway, direct mount to the building, so there's no, you know, raceway run behind them or anything, so they'll look cleaner. That's all done on the interior. And then the smaller letters that say People Solutions and Benefit Solutions, which are tucked underneath those to the right bottom, those are dimensional letters that'll be rail-mounted to the facade.
And I guess, if it's on here, I apologize. How are, how are you going to moderate the lumens so we don't have a super-bright sign here? You know, you've got a dark facade here, so, you know, you don't need too much contrast to make them pop out of there, and, and of course, that's, that's an issue that we bring up a lot, is the intensity of the light, especially the eight LED. Tell us about that. We certainly want the sign to meet the ordinance as far as lumens, but even if there was no ordinance, we'd want it to be moderated.
Yeah, as long as we, you know, if there's a number that we need to hit, or we'll either just, we'll put a dimmer on them. We can always put a dimmer on the sign itself, if need be, if that's to be required.
Well, I guess, I guess what I'm concerned about is one size doesn't necessarily fit all, and if you just put a big, bright LED in there and it's blasting, even though I think, by the way, the building is well-kept, and it looks good, and you've got two signs that are in conformance as far as style, so I think your approach is, is a good one, but you can ruin it by being too bright, and it'll look terrible no matter what the design is. So, I think that brightness of the sign, to me, is extremely significant.
Yeah, and part of that's the harshness of the light, too. So, a lot of times, people will throw in, you know, 8K color temp lights, where I think we have listed on here, they're five to six, so that can be really harsh, too, you know, where, yeah, whether, whether you're going with like these really harsh, cool lights, LEDs or something that's more like a natural daylight light. But, you know, that's a little bit separate from, obviously, the intensity of the lumens, but it definitely affects it, too, you know, as far as how, visibly, realistically, how harsh the sign is going to look. But, yeah, I mean, I can tell you that, you know, we'll meet code for what the lumen, you know, output should be.
Is it a big deal to put a dimmer on them?
No, not really.
Okay.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Is there a motion? Mr. Casada?
I will move to grant the variance with the contingency that there's a dimmer on the lights.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Godik. Is there discussion on this motion? Not seeing, let's call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Passed.
Thank you.
Okay, the last item, they withdrew, so we are looking for a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Any support? All those in favor, say aye. Aye? We are adjourned.